And everyone, the time is seven thirty, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Councilman Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Father, we just thank you. We give you the glory and the honor. We just give you praise for God because we're so grateful that you have kept us and you continuously keep us safe. And Father, we just thank you, Lord Jesus, that we can invite you in our beds. And we ask and we look towards you for wisdom and guidance in this meeting this evening. Father, we ask that you would just bless all participants, everyone that's in attendance, that you will keep our city covered with your blood. Father God, we just thank you, Lord Jesus, for your protection. And Father, we just ask that you will continue to be with us and that you will lead us in that as a whole too, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Councilwoman Harry.
Here.
Councilwoman Hairston.
Here.
Councilwoman Gion.
Here.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
President Curtis.
Here.
About the seven in the tennis rabbit corn.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Moves by Councilman Hairston, the second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Harry in discussion.
Yes, Council President, I'd like to add a topic of discussion, developers.
Developers. Okay.
Um, Council President.
Yes.
I would like to add, um, city events.
Okay.
And, uh, Mr. President, one other thing.
Yes, sir.
Um, snow, uh, snow contract.
And Council President, one last thing.
Yes, ma'am.
COVID testing.
Oh, yeah. Testing. Okay, any other discussion? All right, so these will be added in the order which I received them, uh, in the order of the topical discussions after retro, street retrofitting. All right.
Council President Curtis, this is Victoria Person. Are citizens able to add anything?
No, um, uh, Miss Person, they, they aren't able to add, but we will have, um, uh, a section for, um, citizens' comments. And you can, you know, bring up anything that you would like. So, mm-hmm, thank you. Um. Sorry, when I saw Victoria, I thought Victoria Lewis and kind of threw me off a little bit. All right, so can we have, um, a vote, Ms. Lewis?
All right, Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harry.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Councilwoman Hairston.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gion.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice President Ferguson.
Yes.
Thank you. And President Curtis.
Yes.
We have seven yeses, it's passed.
Okay. First up on the agenda is the, um, uh, acceptance of the minutes that were in the inbox as council members. Uh, so can I have a motion to, uh, finalize and accept the meeting minutes from October twelfth through December the second?
So move.
Moved by Councilman Harry in second.
That's second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson, any discussion? Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call to accept the minutes in the, um, agenda.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Thanks. Councilwoman Harry.
Yes.
Thanks. Councilwoman Hairston.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gion.
Yes.
Thanks. Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice President Ferguson.
Yes.
Thank you. President Curtis.
Yes.
All right, thank you. This is passed.
Okay. Next up on the agenda are the administrative reports. Uh, mind you, we have gone through these administrative reports last week, uh, so the time limit given to, uh, to go over these administrative reports is going to be shortened. You know, so really just high level. Madam Mayor, uh, Mayor Cross, uh, you have five minutes for your mayor report. If you have anything else to add, I mean, you may not want to use five minutes, but up to you.
I thank you, Council President. Uh, good after, good evening, everyone, um, and Happy New Year. As far as HR actions, um, the city has turned in over, uh, the course of the last month. Resolutions for code enforcement, uh, we have, um, forgive me, we have code enforcement, we have go room true member, and we have the go room coordinator. Uh, these are hiring actions, forgive me, that, uh, will close. One has closed on the seventh, uh, two have closed on the seventh, and one will close on the tenth. And that's the go room coordinator. The other two will close on the seventh. Uh, as we look at resolutions, resolutions that have been sent over to the city council include the Director of Public Works, uh, the snow removal, uh, contract, and also the City Treasurer, as well as the Chief of Police. Uh, we are waiting a decision for confirmation on those. Uh, the amateur radio station, um, uh, Radio Club has provided us with, uh, Mr. Walker, who will be our support. In the time that we would go black without any way of getting communications out, then we would have our ham radio station, which, uh, will allow us to have communications globally. Uh, residents, uh, we are working hard on the cleanup efforts, uh, across the city based on the last snowstorm. Um, we do have purchase orders set for McLean Avenue. Uh, and we do have, uh, various other, uh, activities going across the city to, uh, for the various pine trees, which seems to have taken a big hit during the snowstorm. Uh, we met with Darryl Carrington, uh, on traffic enforcements, and we found a, a new provider, we believe, that would be more beneficial for the city. Uh, and they will also help in actually getting the payments back from the traffic violations. So, uh, as far as strategic planning is concerned, uh, we would like to consider, um, bringing a meeting forward, allowing, uh, Darryl Carrington, uh, as the Managing Director, to speak on behalf of, uh, traffic enforcement needs, uh, for our city and involving that. Uh, the demolition for Martin Luther King site was completed on December the fourth. We have worked with Mako, uh, which is the Maryland Association of Counties, um, on getting us our opportunity, if you will, for getting Narcan, uh, provided as a training from Prince George's, um, Health Department. Narcan essentially is a, um, uh, an nasal administered substance that if you are run upon someone that's been in overdose, that it would bring them back. It has been determined that it doesn't cause any harm to those otherwise that are not in overdose, but it could save a life. So that's a push that we want to bring forward, uh, in our city. As we're looking at the mental health and the stability across our city, uh, as, um, the schools and such, uh, one of the things that we did over this last fall was to try and have a few events that would bring community unity together. Uh, we had a goal of meeting three hundred, uh, with food and resources. We actually met five. Uh, so we exceeded that goal. Uh, we ended up having the Polar Express was a huge success. We ended up, um, donating out or giving out, uh, roughly about nine thousand dollars in gifts and, and, and we ended up watching a movie and just a great time for community unity. We partnered with Gia, the Glennard Housing Authority and Luminous, uh, for actually giving out COVID nineteen first, second shots, as well as boosters and flu shot clinic. Uh, on December the sixteenth, we were able to actually get fifty, approximately fifty persons vaccinated, uh, as we're on our journey towards, um, healing from the Omicron variant, um, you know, we're doing our part there as well. Uh, we did, uh, participate with the Santa with the badge event from our Glen Arden Police Department. Major kudos goes out to our police department for thirteen children were provided a uniqueness of a shopping event as well as them being hosted, um, as a gift wrapping party. So a lot of fantastic opportunities for our city. Uh, we did turn in a snow removal, um, contract. Uh, we were able to get them leveraged in this last snowstorm, um, relatively easily based on the previous contract, uh, just extended it. Uh, and then we need to work through that. Uh, the, we did turn in a request for proposal for the, uh, aprons to get them handicap accessible separate from the request for proposal that came in. We're actually fixing the cracks in the sidewalks. We have thirty, uh, locations and they will be, uh, once we have an approval on that resolution submitted for the sidewalks, then we'll start working that and then the ADA sidewalk resolution. We felt like that would be better. Otherwise, we'd have to start over from scratch. Um, outside of that, uh, we did, uh, initiate a quarterly events postcard, which will allow us, um, to save about six thousand dollars a year, uh, by sending out postcards, uh, January, April, July, and October. Uh, as a way of helping citizens stay, um, up to date with advance notice. Uh, of course, utilizing our website and our community forums for any updates and changes due to weather or otherwise. Uh, we thank you so much for, um, all of the support that has been provided, uh, across, uh, from this, from this particular past year. Um, I know that it's been a hard push. We do have a sickle seal awareness campaign that will start. And that will be on the twentieth of January, uh, as well as a blood drive, uh, as we're looking at, uh, the conditions that are happening, uh, within our hospitals today. So, uh, with that, I'm ready to take any questions.
Um, so we will hold all citizens' questions until the end, uh, Mayor Cross. Uh, so we don't get, um, this meeting doesn't, you know, stretch beyond nine o'clock. Um, oh, I'm sorry, nine thirty. Uh, thank you, Mayor Cross, uh, for that report. And I know that you'll be doing, um, an event soon, correct? Where you can dive deeper into the topics that you want to reach into.
Yes, thank you. Uh, that's the, uh, Martin Luther King Junior, uh, Peace Drive Walk, uh, Parade, partnered out with, um, the City of Capitol Heights, uh, Bell Haven, um, Seat Pleasant and, and Glen Arden. And the Solid Foundation, uh, County Executive Alsobrook, as well as State's Attorney Bravefoot.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Wasn't what I was talking about, but thank you for, for it anyway. Now, I was telling you that you were having a, um, a town hall in the future that you'll dive deeper into the topics which you want to discuss. That's what I was mentioning, so. Uh, but thanks for that. Um, uh, Mr. Treasurer Stewart.
Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. This is, um, Dean Stewart. Um, this will be our treasurer's report for November. This will be at a high level and, um, Mr. President Curtis, uh, if you could share your screen. Uh, we'll just look at the, um, the report section of, um, the narration section where I'm just speaking about the highlight areas.
Okay.
So the financial statement is presenting for November, um, revenues of five million, three sixty-six thousand, seven seventy-three. Expenditures were one million, seven thirty-three, nine, uh, seven ninety, which is showing that revenues have exceeded expenses by three million, six thirty-two thousand, nine eighty-four. At this point, revenues for real property tax is at two million, seven seventy thousand, seven thirty-eight. License and permits is at twenty-eight thousand. State grant is at seventy-three thousand, nine thirty-six. And other sources of fund is at seventy-one thousand, eight ninety-one thousand. Our cash balance as of December twenty-eighth was showing our main account with nine million, one fifty-eight thousand, two fifty-nine. Or for balance account, seven thousand and seventy-eight dollars. Our gold room account has one hundred and nine thousand. So Black Grant has one hundred and nine thousand. Uh, or Black Grant has four thousand, one ninety-eight. And the PEG grant has two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight ninety-six. As we have discussed before with regard to real property tax, in December, we saw, we receive a subsequent receipt of thirty thousand, six ninety-two. But by the end of the day today, I got a note from the Prince George's County Tax collectors that we collected since December through to now, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand. So that shows that the fund has, it's, it's fluctuating at this point. Last month, only thirty thousand. This month, we, we got eight hundred and thirty-three thousand. The other.
I'm sorry, in January, we got eight hundred thousand?
Yeah, so these numbers that I'm calling is about, uh, funds that we actually, that was actually received by the Prince George's County, but remitted to the Glen Arden bank account by the next month. So for December, um, those amount, the thirty thousand would have been amounts received through to, let's say, the tenth of, um, December and is deposited to our account by the twelfth of December. Um, for this eight hundred and thirty-three thousand would be amount received through the period from December, let's say, twelfth or tenth through to January tenth. And that's why I got this note today to say that we have actually, uh, we are going to receive by the twelve, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Going forward, our loan has been satisfied. Um, the two police vehicles that were purchased is now, um, out of, um, a debt. Um, we are moving forward with regard to the American Rescue Fund. Um, as I said in the previous meeting, I'll be looking at the entrepreneurial side of our fund, the gold room, to see how best we could receive revenues back from the American Rescue Plan as they have a revenue, um, section where we could recover some of our losses. The twenty-twenty-one audit, their four-year twenty-twenty-one audit is on its way. Uh, we were having a little difficulty with the auditors and the fact that, um, they were having difficulty with staffing. And it's all true because of the pandemic that we're going through, they were having difficulty. I spoke with a partner last week. And, um, we will be doing some work this week to, um, get the audit completed. So I'm hopeful for that. Uh, we will start working, um, tomorrow on that. Um, with that, um, we end the treasurer's report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, and Chief of Police Report, oh. So I guess you're still acting, Chief Robinson.
Yes, I am. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm okay. How's everybody doing? So, uh, I could Chief Jackson submitted, uh, the chief's report a couple of weeks ago. Uh, no new report has been submitted, so I don't have any additional information as it relates to that. However, if anyone has any questions about what's going on, I would be glad to answer those questions at this time.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Jones.
I do have a, a couple of questions. The, uh, information we received last week concerning A-one liquors, uh, did you receive that information concerning the, uh, what the liquor board requires for, uh, the, um, permit at A-one liquors? If you have, I'd like to see that because I'm getting different information pertaining to that. But until I can see what was, uh, what was presented, uh, to the city concerning, uh, A-one liquors, it's just hearsay. But I'd like to, I was wondering if you received that information. I think Councilman Harry was going to provide you with that information.
Yes, Councilman Harry, and he provided me with the contract that, uh, that A-one liquor you used to get that, uh, liquor license. And it does stipulate that they're supposed to have, uh, security there from eight to twelve. And it also had other hours, and that contract was made before the, the law changed for all liquor stores to close at twelve o'clock. Uh, back then, they were supposed to close at like one-thirty, but since then, that's the only thing I saw different on the contract. But ultimately, they are supposed to have security there. And, um, myself and, uh, the city manager, we said we were going to sit back and see last week to see if they had any, if they did have any type of security, you know, besides us. And they did not, so they do not have security. So they are in violation of that contract as far as I'm concerned.
Well, still, I would like to see that documentation because what I'm understanding is they're not, they're, they're supposed to have, at closing, somebody's supposed to be there, definitely be there with them when they close at midnight to secure their, you know, whatever they do when they close at night. That, that's what I'm, uh, hearing, so.
Well, the contract did not say that. The contract said from, it actually said from eight PM to twelve. So at least four, at least four hours, not, um, from twelve, uh, eleven-thirty to twelve o'clock or whatever the case may be.
Okay, so once again, I'd like to see that.
I, I can send it to you tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. Uh, my second question to, to the Police Department is the, uh, twenty-four-seven tobacco store. Now, um, are, are they open twenty-four hours or they are closing at midnight?
That's, that's sort of tricky because, um, the one directly across the street from the police station, they're separate. So they're separate, there are different rules. Talking to, um, our code enforcer, Jerry Thomas, he shared with me that technically they can stay open twenty-four hours if they have the license to do so. Um, when we, when they first opened up, we went to them and asked them to close at twelve. That's what we asked, because we told them that all the stores on MLK were closing at twelve o'clock, and we would appreciate if they closed at twelve o'clock. They honored that for a little while. Then the other cigar store in the eight thousand block, they were like, why can't we stay open if they're open? But, uh, the, the code enforcer advised that in a strip mall, they don't have the same, uh, they don't have the same rights as the ones that's independent. So the one in the strip mall is supposed to close at twelve o'clock.
I remember, I remember when, um, uh, Chief O'Donnell was working on that. He, he, he definitely did not want them to be open past midnight, and he was working with Mr. Karpinski to ensure that they didn't. But I remember, uh, Jerry Thomas showing me, uh, as when I was Council President, some documentation, or not necessarily documentation, but some, uh, plans for the person across the street from the, from the, uh, police station to, uh, uh, set his shop up so that he could open, uh, for twenty-four hours. But, uh, that, but, uh, Mr., uh, Chief O'Donnell was always not in favor of that. So, uh, we asked for the documentation that says that they can stay open till midnight, I mean, past midnight. And they said that the city manager approved this, and then we got an email stating that the prior city manager, Mr. Jones, was the one that said that they could do it, but I have yet to see that documentation. So can I get a copy of that?
I will, I will reach out with Jerry. Like I said, I believe when we were talking to Mr. Karpinski about that, it was, we, they could, they could actually open at that time if they went through some type of train. They're supposed to go through some type of training, and from our understanding, at the time, they were starting to go through that training that would enable them to stay open for twenty-four hours. Have we checked to see if they've completed that training as of yet? No, but we can look into that as well.
And the permitting, I think they have to also get a permit, not only from the, uh, the city, but a permit from the county to do that also.
I believe they had the one from the county. I believe they had one from the county, if I'm not mistaken.
All right, thank you, Council President.
But we'll, but we'll, we'll look into it. We'll look into it further, okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I just want to let everybody know. I just sent, uh, the, um, rules and regulations that the liquor board set down, it should be in your email.
Yes, just, uh, thank you, sir. Okay. Um, well, with that, uh, that's all for the administrative reports. Now we can move into topics of discussion. First up is traffic safety. Councilwoman Tree.
Hi, thank you. Um, so this has been a topic of concern for, you know, all the council members as, as well as the administration. And I see that, um, Mayor Cross has already started to take some action with engaging, um, Harrington and Associates. Um, so what I wanted to talk about this evening was the change that, uh, was made to the Maryland state rules regarding speed cameras, um, where they have eliminated the requirement that speed cameras must be within a certain radius of school, um, which now gives us greater latitude across the city to implement speed cameras in other areas, um, particularly in, um, more residential areas and, um, even HOA areas. So I wanted to bring that to the forefront as a way for us to begin, um, increasing our, our traffic safety mitigation procedures. Also, in looking at the traffic pattern, um, trying to identify if there are ways that we can increase, um, or reduce traffic by increasing, uh, pedestrians' ability to walk and reducing the need for people to drive. And so that kind of leads into the next topic of sidewalk retrofitting. But, um, just staying on the topic of the speed cameras right now, you know, I wanted to introduce that, um, and ask the mayor if it was possible if in those conversations with Carrington and Associates, if we can introduce the topic of adding more speed cameras um, in addition to kind of garnering more, um, of the fees that we're owed from the current speed cameras. Of the fees that were owed from the current speed camera.
Mayor Cross.
Uh yes, thank you. Uh so uh with the, if we are able to go with um Carrington and Associates. We can get as many traffic cameras as uh we like, and yes, very astute recognize reckon uh recognizing that, yes, the rules have changed. We can put these traffic cameras wherever we need. Uh we can even at this point, um all of these are gonna be free to the city, by the way. So I asked, I said, was there a limitation? And also, um Lieutenant Robinson was on the call with me. Feel free to chime in here, LT, but um you know, we talked to him and we said, is there a limitation on how many cameras we can get? And it's like, no, as many as we need to control the speed of flow of traffic and uh protect our citizens was the response. And it doesn't come at a cost to the city, and they actually uh will take the effort, like I said, to chase down. And and get the tickets paid for us. So, I mean, we get a twofold with this uh offer with Carrington and Associates. LT, do you wanna add anything to also speed guns for the police officers too?
Yeah, I was gonna say something about that. Um they have devices that we can um install in our police car. So we can also, you know, run radar, you know, and we don't even have to do, we don't even have to actually do anything. All we have to do is just point the gun and the gun does everything. It even writes a ticket for us and and processes it. So it's a, it's a win-win, and like the mayor said, it's free, it's free, it's free. And we can have as many as we want, or as many as we need, and they collect, they help collect. The money for all the tickets, I don't, you know, with a with a small percentage. It's a win-win situation. It's a great program from what I heard.
And it also goes across six lanes of traffic, right? So it does have the um ability to pick out the right car across six lanes. So with our our city with two lane, four lanes as a max, um you know, we really could. Uh successfully mitigate the traffic speeds across the city.
And seven.
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and before, there was a time, there was a timeframe when these cameras could be worked, uh should be on or being operated. That's no more, so they can be running twenty four seven for the most part.
And has there been thought of of placement?
We can play, I asked about mobility. Um they do have some of our mobiles, so we, so we will be able to move them and place. Like I said, we can also install them in the police car, which of course doesn't remove them, but they also, they're also mobile, so you can put them anywhere you'd like.
And and also, it's a new sleeker design, so if you're, you're familiar with the one that we have right at Bright Seat. And off of Glen Arden Parkway. So the new ones that uh Carrington and Associates proposing is the singular pole with just a camera on it. And it's more appealing for the street appeal, but also, I mean, if you want them mounted like on the side of buildings. I mean, the sky is the limit, and what um Carrington and Associates would like to do is meet with the council. Uh meet with the uh police department, Department of Public Works, city manager, uh and we all just. Walk through this presentation. I want you to see the presentation. I was, I was taken by it. Um LT, I think, was taken by it, so I I think you would do well to see the presentation. I can set that up for you. And um additionally, I mean, they can do it as early as a month and a half. That's how quick he can turn. Once we tell him where to put it, they can start putting it down.
Counsel, I'm sorry.
Question. So what's in it for them?
They get a percentage of the collection. They do get a percentage of the collection, but it's not, it's not a great percentage, but it's a percentage.
Okay, and even the equipment, you know, the cameras to be installed, how how was it free to us?
So it's just like you are Verizon, so if you have Verizon boxes and your house, it's kind of the same concept. Yeah, you're leasing, basically. So for us, we would pay anything for it. If they still own the equipment. We would just tell them where to place them, and then they would do all the rest of it. Um we gain everything from this one. Um we lose little, particularly since they're gonna be chasing down the offenders and and getting the payments as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Ferguson. And then Councilman Jones.
I was gonna ask um about a cost, so I kinda, I guess I'm getting that. Um. They would do all the service and they're, and what they're getting is just percentage of the um. The but funds that are collected from the tickets, so we, basically, there's no cost to the city for um for having the service.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Council President. So if we're leasing this equipment, we are paying something to lease the equipment. Because with Verizon, if for their uh boxes, you you pay a percent, uh not a percentage, but a fee every month for those boxes. So if if they're saying that we have to go into a lease, if we're gonna lease the equipment, then we are going to be paying something. But if if they're saying it's free, then we won't be paying anything, so that's something that'll have to be um addressed. Uh now, how will this? How will this help? I'm sorry, go ahead, uh.
No, 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 I'm sorry. No, you go ahead, you go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, how will this, I mean, we already have, from what I understand, well, there's a stack of tickets already in the police department. That Miss Allen has has shown me, um not only for the police department, for tickets that have not been paid, but also for code enforcement. Will this also uh help the uh code enforcement uh uh entity of this? As far as getting their tickets collected?
You know, this is uh mostly for traffic mitigation, but because they are actually doing um. You know what? This is something we would need to ask. I mean, that's a fantastic question. Um I wouldn't. Because it's all associated with the ticketing process and it's all by legal um accords. I wouldn't imagine that that wouldn't be something that they could incorporate in, but that's not something we discussed, but that would have to be worked out. But that is a very good uh question. I'll take that one back for action.
Okay, and one other question to Council President. I gave you some information when you first became Council President concerning. Collections for the tickets that the police department gave me. Have you had an opportunity to look over that information? Or um can can we share that with the administration so that we'll know that unless it's the same company?
Uh yeah, you can feel free to share that with the uh with the administration as well. I've 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 read it when I uh the uh became president. I know that we had a a balance that basically. Has been due for quite some time and we haven't collected it yet. Uh and it's all about um. Contracted with someone to be able to collect that balance, so I mean, I I'm I'm open with you, sharing it to the um. To the administration and hopefully, maybe if this, you know, relationship looks like um what they're offering. Sounds really good if they could go after that balance too for a percentage. I mean, it's definitely something that I'm thinking the council will be willing to hear as a presentation. Uh if we package that um all that in together.
Okay, so that um information was only one packet that was given to me by the um code enforcer. So could you pass that on to the administration? It was only one, one booklet.
Okay, um and uh back to Chief Robinson, you were saying something about um the leasing. Think you were saying that uh there isn't a leasing cost, but I won't speak for you. You can touch on that uh concern that uh Councilman Jones raised about. Are are we leasing the equipment or they're just giving us the equipment free?
I think that was just a figure, I think that was just a figure of speech, which she said that they're releasing. I think she, we're not leasing it, it's free. Everything is free. She was just saying, she was just comparing.
Yeah.
Using the word leasing, but we're not leasing anything. And as far as the tickets, the tickets that that are owed now. I don't, I don't know if you're asking, will this new company collect on those, or what are we gonna do with the ones that, what are we gonna do with those? I don't think the new company is gonna collect on the old tickets. Um we've been trying to find a company to collect. To to collect those tickets. We've been unsuccessful. Me and Miss Allen, we've been uh, we had a couple of meetings with a couple of people. And we've been unsuccessful so far, so we're still trying.
I'm sorry, that information that she gave me uh it kind of made me think that that was a company that would do that, collect on the old tickets. Because they would, the percentage that they would be getting would be the the the, where the tickets doubled.
Yeah, but we would, but we had, we 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 have to do so much to get, they were asking us to do so much that we have to. Get so much of the ticket information to get to them, which we don't have at right now. It's 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 gonna be a difficult process, but we're we're trying, we're trying.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Uh one last question, um. Did they talk, you you say percentage, did they talk numbers, a percentage, like what percent?
No, we didn't talk the numbers and the percentages on that. Um well, we didn't get too deep into it. And as much as just the wave tops understanding of what the possibilities could be, um so we was waiting to the council would. If it pleases the council to have a presentation, uh administration could set that up, and then I'm sure we can go deeper into the discussion appropriately.
Thank you. Councilman Harry?
Yeah, um yeah, I would like to have that happen because we use auto traffic now, and I think we get, I think auto traffic, traffic is paid ten dollars for every forty dollar ticket. There's this actually um paid. Um also, I would like to know how these new speed cameras are gonna be mounted. Cause a big issue with auto traffic is that they, the cameras run on generators, and people don't want that constant hum in front of the house. Some people are fine with it, but other people aren't. So um yeah, I would like to uh have a meeting with them. Um also. The question is, will we get, will we get any tickets from state highway? That was another issue. Normally, the state don't allow you to collect uh speeding fines on their highway. Um so that's it, that's another thing we need to talk about. But um like I said, I mean, it isn't free. They get their, they get their money from each ticket that's 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 out there, you know, um. That that this get, that gets recorded and that's, and that gets paid. If they don't get paid, then they, what you call it? Um they don't get the money. But the chief did come to us a couple of years back with a company that was willing to try to collect. The almost like almost over three hundred thousand dollars in tickets that were not paid, and the council at that time just did not, would not go for it. They just would not support it for some odd reason, I don't know why, but um I'm gonna see if I got that information, I may forward it to uh the administration, and maybe they can look at it. Maybe this company is still willing to do it. The issue is that most of the tickets are forty dollars, and I think the company will get thirty percent of that, I think. So you take the thirty percent, then a ten dollars that go to the camera company, you know, you know, you gotta see if it's worth the time now. How much you're gonna collect, so. Yeah, I would, I would love to have a meeting set up with them, because there's a lot of questions I like to ask them. And one is, what do those cameras run off of? Are they generated, generated power or they run off solar, electric, what? Because that's, that's gonna be a big issue, having those things sitting in front of somebody's house humming all day, all night long. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Um I know this isn't a part of the um. The ticketing as it relates to traffic safety, but I've not gotten uh filled with several questions from. Citizens about speed bumps on Glen Arden Parkway and Sir Michael. Um as we talk about traffic safety, because there's a lot of people that are, and there's actually been an accident. On Glen Arden right when you get into um. Uh Woodmore, uh cause they speed around that curve, and if they're coming off the route from the. Shopping center, then they speed down Sir Michael, then turn and speed down the parkway. So I'd like to, uh as part of traffic safety, uh see if we could um get speed bumps. Um along that traffic route as well, so.
Yeah, thank you for that, Council President. That was gonna be my next question about Carrington and Associates, if they just focus on um. Speed cameras or if they, you know, had other traffic calming measures that um they could offer us like the. Um speed bump, um and you know, like even signs up that uh indicate what the speed limit is.
We can definitely, we can definitely work to get all of these questions answered, and I've, I've taken down all the notes here. And uh what I'll do is I'll get um uh Mister McLong to work with uh Miss Lewis. Uh to get an appropriate date for your calendars and get it set up soon as possible. Um then that way we can uh get moving on this, the traffic calming methods as well as signage. And um what is the power as well as uh percentage of intake from them? And uh formally, could they possibly assist with the recouping of fees from previous, so.
Thank you, uh Mayor Cross, uh Chief Jackson, I'm sorry, I can Chief Robinson.
Uh Councilman Fareed, uh you've made, you made mention of a sign. We do have a sign. Um I spoke to Howard and we actually gonna put it on Glenon Parkway in the ninety one hundred block. That uh that shows your speed, so you'll, you'll see if you're speeding. Hopefully, that will slow down, but Howard's been ill sick, so therefore. He hasn't been able to put it up, but we do have a sign and we are gonna put it in the ninety one hundred block. So hopefully, that will slow traffic down. We do have a sign. We do have a radar sign that's run by battery. And we're gonna hook it on one of those poles.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think what we've discussed thus far is is great in terms of kind of um lagging where they're speeding. Um I think what we're, what um Council President is talking about in terms of the speed humps. And even um kind of signs or, you know, stop signs at certain intersections will help kind of prevent some of the speeding. Um those stop signs can really help slow people down if they have to kind of stop at every corner. Um but I don't know what the, what the uh ideal traffic pattern is for this area. Um you know, like what that would, what that would cause, if there were stop signs everywhere. So I'm just hoping that Carrington and Associates can kind of do a full analysis, a breadth of the different options for us. And kind of help us come up with a plan that's most optimal for the city.
All right, well, thank you. Uh street retrofitting, Councilman Fareed. I'm sorry, um Tennessee Hand, Councilman Jones.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to uh uh also indicate something that I've been getting from uh Ward Three uh citizens. Is we started doing the Ward Street uh street uh repaving, and uh we need to can get ready to continue in that vein. Once the weather breaks and asphalt opens, to continue that project and Ward Three to have the rest of the streets paved. Uh in Ward Three, because that was something that that's been ongoing, that needs to be finished. Because if you look at um Glen Arden Parkway at Bright Seat Road, uh that is starting to. Um has holes in it down at the light, so uh and we do need to do Glen Arden Parkway. Um that also needs to be um ex- uh revisited. That and um maybe when we can do this, do the streets, because when the gentleman, we did uh from the, from Barcroft down to Lavelle to Gary. And when he put that uh new, um well, not new, but when he replaced the speed bump on the Gary. He put in, it was a little wider, it was like a quiet table, and and the, in the District of Columbia, they don't have uh speed bumps per se, which they did. Where they were humped over, you know, just short, but now they have quiet tables where they're just a little bit wider. You know, and you have to be a little bit more strategic about uh bringing your uh automobile over them, so. Uh but I just don't want us to get away from not completing the Ward Three street project. Thank you.
Thank you. Street retrofitting, Councilman Fareed.
Yeah, so um this actually goes along with the topic of traffic um safety. It's really uh a. A series of actions to create sidewalks where there are no sidewalks, um and our city has a lot of those types of streets. Um when, you know, subdivisions were built decades ago, um the idea was that sidewalks. Um would bring, you know, undesirable foot traffic to the area, and so, you know, many suburban communities did not have sidewalks. And that's why you kind of see where it's just kind of all grass, but um in recent decades, um there has been efforts to increase sidewalks. Because it increases the ability for pedestrians to walk, right? So if there's more people walking, there's less cars, which is kind of by default a way to decrease, um, traffic concerns. It also increases fitness, um, in, you know, our community. And, um, in a community like ours, if you think about something like, you know, if there are children who, who go to. Um, you know, one of the elementary schools, in some cases, they wouldn't be able to walk to school, even though it's a short distance. Because there aren't actually sidewalks for them to go off on, and they have to walk in the street, and so that creates a dangerous situation. Um, so sidewalk retrofitting is the idea that we would put sidewalks in places. Um, so I shared in the documentation, uh, approaches that different municipalities have taken, different counties have taken. In addressing that issue. Um, so it comes with, uh, you know, adding sidewalks where there are none. It also is addressing, you know, widening, um, sidewalks that are existing. Um, it also addresses putting bike lanes to allow for, you know, that type of, um. Transportation. And so I wanted us to look at the different, uh, methods in which it's done. And typically what I've seen that looks successful is where, um, residents themselves will petition. For, you know, saying, I would like my street to have a sidewalk, and that, that would be a way of going about doing it. Um, there are lots of benefits to having sidewalks. As I mentioned, you know, you have the traffic, but it also increases property values. Um, again, not having sidewalks was a thing in the, you know, in fifties, but it's not a thing now. Um, having a low walkability score is, um, is definitely a detractor. And if we wanna have people want to move to Glen Arden, um, then we, you know, should look at really increasing this. So, um, um, I wanna start the conversation, see what we can do, what people's ideas are about that. And then if we can come to an agreement, put together a program for how we start to, um, put more sidewalks in our city. And I thought, um, Mayor Cross, this would be, uh, the vendors that we've been looking at to repair the sidewalk. They might also be, um, a good vendor to, you know, create sidewalks. I'll just plug there and see if anyone has any question.
Any questions, uh, Mayor Cross?
Now, thank you so much, uh, Councilwoman Fareed for bringing this up. This has been one that near and dear to our hearts. Well, as we look at Tyrell, they have now put a tire in the hole on the right side of the road. So, right when you come into, off of, um, uh, Ardwick Road, once you cross over Ardwick. If you'll look to the right, literally, they have snuck a tire in the hole that's now there in the side of the, the concrete. There between the sidewalk or the, the apron and the street. So there is a dire need for sidewalks, particularly, um, down Tyrell, down Jeff. And some o- other areas and, um. I don't know if you remember, Councilman Herring, you and I having a discussion about this while, while back about, you know, could we even widen some of the roads there in Ward One? Uh, all of this would be, uh, a discussion with the citizens, uh, because, um, you know, if you're gonna widen a road. And you have to give up, you know, some of that easement to allow at least three feet to be put in. But the benefit of that, as you, uh, so eloquently stated there, Councilwoman Fareed, is you get to then park cars on both sides of the road. And still have the middle of the street where you can pass two cars safely. And then, um, you know, we get to put in some sidewalks. Now, for every mailbox, and this is literally, you know, how does it say, like, right off of Bright Seat Road into. Um, you know, Ward Three on this side of town, uh, we would have to move the mailboxes. So that would be a concern. I've looked at that. Uh, the mailboxes would have to be taken back, you know, into the yard some. And the city would have to be responsible for that if we were to widen the streets. So that's just a part of consideration. But, um, yeah, I, I definitely agree with you. So street retrofitting is, is needed. The sidewalks, if we can update that, would build, uh, the property values and, and allow us to have, uh, a healthier city overall. Cause we do have a lot of citizens that walk and the street is not where we want them. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Um, Councilwoman Fareed, is there anything else on the retrofitting?
Mr. President, I just wanna just say one thing. I mean, and I implore you to definitely speak to the citizens in Ward Three, cause when we talked about sidewalks before, they didn't want no pots and no sidewalks. No matter what anybody think, they wanted that extra ten feet in their front yard, and they want to pop the sidewalks in the neighborhood. So, um, like I said, you definitely gonna have to get the input from the citizens, um, and, and, and the wards, you know, for, uh, these sidewalks. I mean, they, they, they're gonna push back like there's no tomorrow, cause they don't want them. They enjoy that country feel they got in the neighborhoods without those sidewalks. So, that's gonna be a battle that I don't think you're gonna win. Um, honestly, um. I'm just being realistic, cause we've tried it over and over again and taken ten feet of their front yard. The day still is, is their front yard is, is gonna be a, a, a serious battle. And this for Ward One, you know, my thing is widening the streets. I don't, I would. Okay, I guess my thing is, you wanna put sidewalks down in one ward, then you wanna take away sidewalks in, in, in my ward, which has some very narrow streets. But yet no one's doing any enforcement of commercial vehicles, which is taking the most of the parking on the streets. So I mean, this gotta be a, a combination of things, cause, um, again, the streets in Ward One, I mean, you can barely get through them. Because there's so much, so many cars parking. You also, you did, you gotta deal with a lot of, um, multifamily housing, single family homes have been turned into apartments. You know, commercial vehicles all over the place. We got a law in the books that's not being enforced, you know, so. You know, um, when you talk about traffic control and traffic mediation and all of that, you gotta look at everything that's going on in, in, in the city completely, so. That's my two, my comment.
And I, I appreciate that comment, Councilman Harry, and I think you're right. And that's why I'm, I'm citing what seems to work best is when the residents kind of apply to have a sidewalk. Done rather than kind of a saying, you must have a sidewalk here. That seems to be the best approach in Montgomery County is doing that. Um, so, I, my, my, my approach wouldn't, I would not suggest we try to force people to have sidewalks. But certainly, um, where people do want them. Um, you know, creating a program so that they can do that. Um, we can use ARPA funds for that. Um, so it would sort of be like, uh, just applying to say, you know, we, the people who live on this street would like to have a sidewalk. And, you know, the funds would be available to, to do that. But certainly it sounds like, uh, you know, a public hearing would be a good avenue to go as well, to kind of fill us with feedback on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Um, developers, Councilman Hairston.
Hey, hey, thank you. Good evening. So, uh, uh, associate had reached out to me that's working with the developers and informed me that, um, Woodmore Town Center had been sold along with twenty-two acres. Undeveloped property. That company, Ben, uh, Urban Age Properties, is the developers that purchased it for a hundred and ninety-three million. Excuse me. I was just gonna suggest that we meet with the Urban Age Properties to see what their future goes off for the property. And what their intentions are for the remaining acres.
All right.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I agree. We need to get ahead of this, because this is a new developer who probably has not read the DSP that's involved with the Woodmore Town Center development. And all the requirements there in, so we really need to get ahead of this to make sure they don't start moving forward, trying to do something that's not in the best interest of the city of Glenon. Especially with those twenty-two acres. We don't know what they're gonna do, but we don't know if they're inside of Glen, I think they're inside of Glenon. But we really do need to get, uh, uh, ahead of that and get a seat at the table before they decide to start planning. And I think we need to invite them out, as Mr. Harrison, Hairston said, um, invite them out to give us. One is a meet and greet, and two, to give us their, uh, view of what they're planning on doing. Thanks.
Any volunteers for point on this?
Excuse me.
I said, any volunteer for point, uh, on, um, on this? I don't know if, if, if you guys wanted to, to lead it, or, uh, if you wanted Mayor Cross to lead the effort in, uh, making the connection.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem. If Mr. Harrison doesn't have any problem with leading a point on this, since he was contacted.
I'm fine with it. I'll take lead on it. If it's cool, um, Councilwoman Fareed, this is her wall.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, that is so. Um, we all work together.
Uh, Mayor Cross, I saw your hand.
Oh, yes. So, uh, actually, City Manager Barbara and I was talking about this, um, on Friday. And, and being able to set up a meeting with them and, um. We had reached out to a couple of folks, well, I'd reached out to a couple of folks to see if we can move forward on that. But, um, if you want me to hold fast, uh, Councilman Hairston, um, just let me know. But I'd already started to work on pulling those guys forward.
Mr. President?
Uh, Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I think this needs to be a unified front, and if we meet, we need to meet with the mayor and the council as a, as a body. Not mayor, council, city manager, whoever, everybody that we need to meet with, in order to discuss with them. We don't need them going to one group, talking to one person, and then coming up with something else. That's the way they, that's what developers saw that. Put that little wedge in between the, the, the body, the, the elective bodies in the city and try to get something out of us and, and, and cause all this attention. So we need to meet as a unified body, all together to hear, and let them say what they gotta say, you know, to all of us at the same time, so we all on the same plate.
So with that, would it be all the same, just, uh, to allow me to take lead on this, uh, Councilman Hairston? To pull out a meeting for all of us to meet?
That's fine with me.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Hairston, Councilman Herring, and Mayor Cross. City events, Councilwoman Ferguson.
Everyone. I went to, uh, just, um, received an email from, uh, Mayor Cross today.
We can barely hear you, uh, Councilwoman Ferguson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you know.
Okay, I'm gonna, I referenced an email that I received today from Mayor Cross, uh, concerning an event. Um, I think she said, you just started working on it on Saturday. MLK Day event. Um. I noticed that, um. The police department was mentioned that was gonna be included in the activities and, um. I wanted to know. Who, um, the other employees that were going to be, um, involved. Um, I would think that Public Works and some other people, but that's a paid holiday, so I was wondering, um. Uh, as far as how, how would we go about paying them? I know, um, overtime, the police, uh, have, um. Gone over their budget, so how would the employees, uh, be paid or compensated? Would it be comp time or would it be, uh, payment?
Overtime.
Uh, and overtime.
Mayor Cross.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we intend to utilize police forces that would already be on, on shift that day. Um, we wouldn't need any extra additional, because we've actually got the police detail that will come with. Um, State's Attorney Bray Boy, the police detail that comes with, um, uh, County Executive Alsobrook. And we'll also have the Maryland Park Police as police detail that will follow the entire parade route. So, uh, with that, we have, you know, several of the other police details that will be, uh, in, involved. As far as, you know, the county is concerned, so we wouldn't need a whole bunch of presence. Uh, so the amount of police officers that would already be on shift for that day, uh, as essential personnel would be acceptable. Uh, as far as additional, uh, forces from the city, uh, Natai would be necessary and, and William. Uh, primarily because we just use the restrooms, but, uh, we would need to have seating, uh, placed out. Uh, we would use sixty seats for the executive as well as the seniors, uh, that would be in attendance. And, uh, handicap. Uh, the intent is to not bring this inside of the building outside of the restrooms. So that it would be outside where we would have good ventilation. Uh, it's gonna be a small ceremony. Uh, that's why it's mostly a driving event, uh, which will start at the metro station at Capitol Heights. Progress itself through Seat Pleasant, uh, with random acts of kindness there, um, paying for peoples. Uh, at the Save-A-Lot and paying for, uh, people's, uh, meals at the local establishments there. Uh, come down through Bell Haven, uh, there's a trash pickup scheduled, uh, along the ML Martin Luther King Parkway there. Um, a- as well, providing, um. Service hours for, uh, high schoolers that will be meeting, the service hours for graduation. And then the caravan would come into Glen Arden, uh, where we would have a very short, uh, presentation. To, um, Peyton Evans, uh, young PJ, uh, who tragically lost his life. Um, last year while over a relative's home and landover. Uh, and then we would pay tribute to our own, um, Stacks the Barber, who, you know, tragically lost his life through gun violence. I know State's Attorney Bray Boy, that's one that's near and dear to her heart, and she would want to speak to that. So relative to our, our facility and our forces, um, we wouldn't need anything other than just the chairs. So that's why it would be Natai and William. Uh, I wouldn't suspect that Public Works would be needed for this one. Outside of its regular everyday, which is tapering the grounds, which they do anyway. Um, and for the police force, it's the police station, uh, the forces that will be on station already.
Okay, so I see you, but I have some, um. Refreshments as well, so, um, I know you have, uh, previously, um. Had some events scheduled, um, well, only getting to that part of the budget. The other thing, okay, so I'm satisfied with that. The other thing is, um. Do you plan on still having the. For, um, movie nights in February?
So I've been looking at that, and the intent, uh, behind that was obviously community unity. Um, what we can do on that is utilize Comcast and Verizon and just showcase the movies in that way. So just have our, um, movies playing. Uh, we're using this as a Black History Month awareness opportunity. Uh, and the goal was every Thursday in February to show a, a movie of black history excellence, like Harriet Tubman. Um, you know, our, um, you know, um, you know, the Freedom Fighters or something. But we can put that in, um, Comcast and Verizon, based on the rise in the numbers. Uh, we do have our quarterly postcard ready for sig- signing and, uh, forgive me, of, of, of mailing. But one of the things that we highlight on that is to always watch the website in times of change or, uh, needed changes. That, you know, we might have to this postcard. Uh, but the intent, uh, initially was to have this in the go room. Uh, with the popcorn, with the hot dogs and all of that. Uh, but, uh, at this time, we're looking at pushing that to, uh, Comcast and Verizon showing. Uh, which still edifies the, the, the moment of, of excellence, you know, um, in, in movements. If you will, for our heritage awareness.
Okay, um, the reason why I asked, because I was, um, wanted to suggest that, um, because of the numbers, that we need to consider, um. Counseling, uh, these upcoming events that's gonna be in the go room and drawing people together, um. So, um. And I think we, uh, and maybe to revisit, maybe in March or April to see, you know, where we are in terms of having inside, um. Events that's, that's gonna bring everybody together, because, um, I know the last event. There was a mass down, there was definitely not six, um, social distancing at all. there was a mass down. There was definitely not six, um, social distancing at all. So, um, regardless whether anyone has contracted anything from, from those events, I think it's just, um, would be considerate just to not to do that because people would be falling to come. And I would definitely hate, you know, for any one to contract something because we're just trying to be social. So I do appreciate the fact that you have, um, rearranged the way you're gonna, uh, present those, those movies. But that was my concern, just to see would you be consider, considering, um, to just forego the, um, onsite events. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Ferguson, Councilman Harry.
Yeah, I just, I have a question because the mayor said that the, um, county exists, gonna have a police detail and, uh, uh, State's Attorney's gonna have a police detail, but those details are specifically for their protection. They're not there to do other things. Um, they're there to protect them, you know, um. Um, so, I mean, how, I'm trying to figure out, if you're doing a parade, who, what police officer is gonna get this parade from Capitol Heights to Glen Arden? Um, is, is county gonna enlist some other police officers, um, to help us, some other police officers or seat presence involved? Are they police officers working? And if they're, everybody's, and if everybody's police officers are working, then ours not contributing to the traffic control situation, especially when it get into Glen Arden. It's gotta be some traffic control somewhere around. I know, I mean, you can't, we can't push, we can't pull officers off the street. They should be patrolled in the streets to sit up at a parade or at a event. Normally, we would just have, we would use, we'd schedule extra officers to work that. So, I'm just curious how that's gonna work. You know, I mean, another, and, and also other resources, I mean, and, and you asking one person to set up chairs, normally you would get Public Works to do that. Because you're gonna need more than one person. Also, you, if you're gonna be doing it outside, you're probably gonna need tents and some other stuff. So I, I can't see how you're just gonna have one person. That's a lot of work for one person to do. You know, I mean, it isn't just, it isn't just easy to pull them out chairs, getting them, setting them up and then breaking them down and rolling them back up that hill into that go room. I mean, is that I'm more involved in that? So, I'm just curious, you know, and again, it comes down to me, what's, what when a budget is the, is this gonna be spent from? Because I see spending, but I don't, I'm not seeing where these, where there's money coming out, what, what line item is coming out of. You know, I mean, we appropriate, but we appropriated funds for certain events, and I think those are the events that should be held. The ones that we, we funded, anything over and above that, there's, like you say, you're gonna send out these flyers and I'm still, I still haven't heard where, what line item is this flyer's gonna come out of? I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm not seeing it. I mean, because there's been a lot of mailers, there've been a lot of stuff coming out of the budget for events, and I'm just trying to figure out where is this money coming from, you know? What line item is it coming out of? So, like I said, we went over the numbers last time. I think we had like five hundred dollars left and administrative special events. So, I know the flyers that you're gonna tell are more than that. And I, and, and I think, I don't even know you fact, did you factor in creating the flyers also, not just mailing, but also creating. So, I'm just trying to figure out where the money coming from, because we gotta look at that and we gotta see what's what. Um, when it comes down to, I mean, when it comes down to us being council members and our responsibility as council members, when it comes down to the funding of these projects and ensuring that we don't go over budget on this stuff, all the spending and nobody looking at the numbers, I just, it bothers, it's worrying me now because I, I just see money going out, but I'm not seeing what a line items, what line items, what line items are being affected. So, that's my concern. Hmm, thank you.
So, I, I did see something on Facebook that posted today. Uh, that's already been advertised. So I didn't wanna put that out, you know, not that answers your question, um, Councilman Harry, because it doesn't. Uh, but I thought I saw something and I'm looking at it now. Uh, it is actually advertised on the already advertised. Um, I don't know what a mailing is going now, so, um, Mayor Cross, if you wanna re, uh, to respond to, uh, Councilman Harry?
Okay, you have to forgive me, the system locked up on me. What am I responding to? Forgive me.
It, his concern was, uh, the budget, uh, again, uh, last time we talked, there was only five hundred dollars left in the events category. And now we have this on top of other events. Uh, and he wanted specifically what line item were these funds coming out of, um, to send out the mailings and do anything else that we want to do as relates to the MLK, um, event. Did I capture that? I think I captured that.
Thank you. So, as it relates to the MLK event, that's not gonna cost the city, um, any additional, like, out of the special events funds monies. Uh, in fact, with the partners that are participating, um, the only thing that is costing us at this point is, um, the use of the chairs and the use of the, uh, restrooms, um, and our, uh, gold room crew to kind of help with those restrooms. Uh, the police officers that are already on staff, uh, we talked about that already. So as far as the, the refreshments, the food, those types of things, those are being partnered by other cities. Uh, in fact, Bowie will support us in that capacity. Uh, this event, um, all of the neighboring cities are really, uh, standing up and coming to, um, coming to the response of, you know, the organizations, uh, to, to make this, this happen in, in the most, um, light and, uh, cordial way possible. So for as far as that's concerned, uh, this won't cost us, um, financially in that budget. We have just over about two grand worth of money. I'm not sure where your five hundred dollar figure's coming from. So with, with moving the, um, with us moving the February event, uh, based on, uh, the internal, um, use of the gold room, uh, and the request to not utilize that, uh, at this time until around March. Uh, then that pretty much takes us, you know, back to, uh, our two thousand dollars, which allows us to carry forth out, uh, in March where, you know, we start to prepare ourselves for, um, you know, we wanted to do something for the kids as they're getting ready to go out to spring break. And then following into April, where we wanted to do something for Mother's Day, but, uh, keep in mind, um, I've been quite successful as mayor in getting, you know, organizations to support and I'm gonna tell you, there's a lot of folks that are in this time and particularly dealing with COVID, as we've talked about our ARPA monies, the mental stability of Prince George's is really being, uh, tested right now. And there's a lot of funding out there to support things that bring, uh, mental health and, uh, part of what we're
So, point of order, Mayor Cross. Um, yeah, I appreciate that. I think it's, it's really important, uh, just for time's sake. Um, that, I think you've answered the question
Oh, yeah.
it's not going to cost, uh, anything. Um, and so we'll just keep on moving for the sake of time. Um, but not to say that what you weren't, that what you're saying wasn't important, but, you know, just so we can get to, uh, the citizens' comments and they can weigh in as well. So, uh, I saw Councilwoman Ferguson's hand and then, uh, Councilman Jones, I'll come to you. Okay, uh, Councilwoman Jones. Okay, alright.
This will be real short. Um, it's one thing that when, when I first came on the council, that when any event was held, uh, anything that the, the council did or, um, or, or any event, anything that was done, is that a, a budget was submitted. When we did the eightieth anniversary, when that was done and over with, a budget was submitted. A budget was submitted for the Christmas party, uh, uh, the, the budget was, uh, put together after everything had been done and the budget was submitted. So everybody would know what was spent and what, what it was spent on. I think we need to get back to that so that the council will know, uh, as the fiduciary responsibility, uh, uh, accountability persons in this, that we'll know, once you have an event, we need to know what was spent and what was, uh, you know, uh, noted, what was spent in, in, in a, in a budget that was presented to the council to let us know what was spent and how, where the monies went.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
You're welcome.
Uh, Councilwoman Gion.
Sure, I'm not gonna be long, um, Council President. I do wanna say that I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Jones that I think a lot of this will be avoided, um, going forward if we opt towards that model. And I do think that one of the points that was raised by Councilwoman Ferguson and also Councilman Herring, um, touched on something that was mentioned or discussed, um, heavily um, during our work session with Acting Chief Robinson, which is where is the, um, spending going to be coming from for the police coverage for events since the budget, they're already over as far as overtime? Or if they're not over, I have to, I close my, my, um, the document real quick. If they're not over, they're nearing it. So, to Councilman Herring and Ferguson's point today, this evening, it's more so, does it make sense or is it fair to have the police officers, um, who are already covering, um, the city and the people, you know, in the, you know, should there be any crime happening, you know, during the parade? Um, while taking them off that shift per se, uh, Madam Mayor, and then putting them to work for a parade. I think that's one of the things that, um, the point that was being, one of the points that was being made that we wanna really pay attention to is what's gonna happen with the police coverage, you know, so, that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gion. Uh, and just to close out that point, I do believe that any person working, uh, you know, the gold room staff working on Martin Luther King should get paid time and a half, correct? Because it is a, a holiday and that prevents them from doing, if they wanted to do service for MLK, they, um, spend it the way they want to. So I do believe that that counts against the overtime pool as well. Okay, uh, Mayor Cross, briefly.
Well, I'm good, Council President. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, uh, snow contracts, Councilman, oh, here's the, Councilman Harry.
Yeah, um, um, I looked over the contract that we signed back in twenty twenty, the snow contract. And, um, that had a two-year option on it, even though it did have an error on the dates. The contract is still valid for until twenty tw- till December twenty twenty-two. And I think we need to go ahead, move forward and go ahead and sign off on the contract for this year coming up. Um, it's the same company we used for the last two years. I think we actually used this company these last two snow episodes. And, um, I think we need to just go ahead and move forward and sign off on that and, and not hold it up any longer because I don't know when we're gonna have another snow episode, since the contract is still in effect. I think we should move forward with that. So we can have a contractor on, on, on staff and have the number of trucks that we need to get the entire city plowed.
And you corrected me wrong. We don't need another resolution for that, correct? It was just in, alright.
Council just gotta get, and, and like I say, I mean, I would like to make a motion that the council accept it, accept extending this, uh, snow contract that we currently have. And then that's it, just sign off on it and we good.
A, a motion via consensus?
No, motion via vote, since we're in a public meeting.
Okay. And, and sorry, you
I'm making
your motion, and you're making that motion. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Jones, uh, Adam Clerk.
Hey, thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yeah.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah.
President Curtis?
Yes.
And, uh, and that resolution actually gives authority to the council president to sign off on it, so.
Okay.
Alright.
Uh, I think, uh, I just looked at the weather as we were trying to, um, see how Martin Luther King parade was gonna work. I think there's supposed to snow on Saturday and Sunday. Um, so, thank you, Councilman Harry for bringing it.
Alright, thanks. That's it for me.
Uh, and, uh, Ms. Barbara, um, I will be in there whenever the contract is ready, uh, for signature. Just let me know.
Yes, sir.
Right, thank you. And last topic of discussion, COVID testing. Councilwoman Fareed?
Thank you. Um, as most know already, we have partnered with Washington Integrated, um, to perform COVID testing in our city, um, making it accessible to our citizens as well as those in surrounding communities. Um, we've been doing it for about three weeks now. It's been very successful. Um, testing, uh, came right on time for the surge. Um, and it, it met a significant need in our city. Um, in talking about the weather, uh, in the last week, we've had to cancel or move testing several times because it is just too cold, um, uh, or it was snowing or it was raining. And, um, in parallel to that, the number of people who are testing had declined, which is good. Um, so we are no longer testing where there are long lines of people. Um, and I would like to have us move back to the municipal center so that the testers can have access to the nutritional center so that they're not standing out in the cold for two or three hours, but have a place to get warmed up um, as, in kind of rotate, um, as they test people. Um, to make sure that there are no traffic concerns as we had. Um, I did discuss with Dr. Cohen, reducing the number of appointments, um, to, uh, twenty for fifteen, fifteen minute time slot, um, so that there would not be any sort of backup industry as there was when we were managing the food surge. Um, this would also address the, uh, need for the police officers to be um, present as they are right now, uh, over at First Baptist Church at Glen Arden. Um, and so I just wanted to bring that to the council for your thoughts on, um, moving that back. Uh, and the goal would be to move it back next week. Um, so, I'll just pause and let, let me see if you all have any questions. And just to clarify, if, we wouldn't be doing the testing inside the nutritional center, would continue to be in your car. The testers would go to the cars, but it's just giving them a shelter so that they're not freezing for several hours.
Um, any discussion on this? Anyone, uh, any council member opposed to, to this? Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
I understand what's being done and why it's being done and, and the need. But we also have to look out for our employees that are in that area also. Um, we've had, um, employees come in with, um, minor, or, or maybe not minor, uh, i- issues of being, uh, sick. And then you have other employees that are in the police department that work, um, together, closely together. They're not really six feet apart. So, and they're in that area also, in that, in that nutrition center area. So, um, we, we have to talk about sanitizing and, and deep cleaning. And because this is what the police department, uh, the, the administrative staff is doing in the nutrition center now. When somebody comes through there, they had the, um, they've been cleaning up and, and wiping down and making sure that, so that they'll, they're in an area that's safe. And they had to, uh, carpet shampooed and had, um, the area cleaned. And then all of this food was bought in. So then they have to go back and redo that again. And like I said, they've had issues where, uh, some, uh, the personnel would come in and, and be sick. And they have to, they, you have to make sure that they look out for, we have to ensure that they are going to be safe in this process. Because they're, they're really, the, the administrative staff is really doing the deep cleaning themselves. And like I said, the, the police officers coming in, they use that area, that area is used in, uh, for, uh, uh, meetings that they have. So, uh, like I said, we have to take in consideration the employees and the, and the sanitizing and the deep cleaning that has to be done in order to ensure and the sanitizing and the deep cleaning that has to be done in order to ensure that our employees are, are kept safe. Thank you.
Councilman Fareed, did you, did you, were you saying anything?
No, I, I think that's, that's a good point. I didn't realize that the police were using the nutritional center or that the employees were using the nutritional center, um.
Okay. Councilman Hairston?
Um, so my question was for, um, Councilwoman Fareed. I mean, we don't have testing at the, um, First Baptist or our Glen Arden site that only be done on, um, the Pennsylvania Avenue like, in the, in the Pennsylvania Avenue, um, location?
Yeah, if we don't, if we don't move it back to the municipal center, and it's not a matter, the First Baptist Church of Glen Arden is telling us, like, we can't use their space anymore. It's just that the testers are outside. So like tomorrow, the high is gonna be twenty-seven degrees. So for them to be out there, you know, from two to five, three hours, it's really cold outside. I was out there testing with them for an hour on Thursday and I was freezing, like it's cold, cold. And so it's again, not for the people who are being tested to come in, but for the testers, just the kind of, you know, they have a team of about five people, so they can kind of rotate, you know, the testing and get warmed up and then, you know, come back out and test, you know, in the next fifteen-minute shift. So it's really just providing them with a shelter so that they don't, they don't freeze.
So, so I, I feel like we should try to find a way to accommodate it. That's just my, my opinion. Cause I know I had got tested over, oh, I think it was Friday. And I know when I drove all the way up to Pennsylvania Avenue, I think it can be very inconvenient for some of our citizens because one, there's no parking out there in DC. So I legit parallel parked and got out of my car and just went into the door real quick, just tossing the ticket, cause I ain't got time to drive all the way around DC to be to look at some little parking spot. So council, you know, administration, if it's something that we can do, I would suggest that we, you know, keep it convenient for our citizens as much as we can.
Councilman Ferguson?
So, if we brought them back, um, to the municipal center, could we, um, maybe purchase some tents or something? Uh, warming tents that we can always use it later. Um, like for instance, when, or we have our, um, shred day, it has been cold out there, so we have to be timed, we can just be in there in like a warming tent.
Mm-hmm. So yes, that could be an option for the warming tents. The on- the only thing that I can't gauge is how warm the warming tents actually are. Um, cause I had suggested that, um, spoke with, um, with someone from the church earlier about that. And she, she said that those, uh, thermal insulated tents, that they're not really that warm when you're out, when it's freezing temperatures. So, um, and you can't put a heater in those. That would be, you know, a hazard to put like heaters in the tents with them. Um, so, I mean, I'm short of buying like little shelter houses, like little sheds for them to stand in. I don't know, you know, what we could do. Um, but I, I think on Councilwoman Jones's point around the san- the sanitation, um, certainly that, uh, staff teams up after themselves. So it would not be a problem. They're just so thankful for us, to us for allowing them to be able to test in the community. Um, because as Councilman Hairston pointed out, their, their primary location is in DC, but many of them live here in the surrounding communities and wanna be able to provide that service within Prince George's County. So us providing that space is, is really critical to achieving that goal. Um, so I think if, if we can look at things, but I also, I guess my other question would be, why are the police using the nutritional center? Why are the employees using the nutritional center? Is that typical or is that something that's been happening recently? And, uh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Ms. Jones, I bet, yeah, Councilwoman Jones.
Uh, they've always used a nutrition center for lunch and they, at one time, it was like a small little substation before they moved the computers out for some, when they had overflow officers or something like that, they would, now the, the officers go to, uh, most of them go to the substation. But when they get, have to come to the, the, uh, municipal center, they're either, uh, eating lunch in the, uh, nutritional center because there's a, a little kitchenette in there that they, they have stuff in there that they, uh, they use for their lunches and stuff like that. And then the other question is, uh, Pastor Jenkins did not, is not allowing access. Um, there, you, uh, he's not allowing access to the building?
Right, um, I'll tell you exactly what they said, but it, it, it more so has to do with the fact that they have events going on. And when, why they can't coordinate that. So even when we're using the parking lot, we're, we're not even using the top of the parking lot that's supposed to be in the ministry center. Like that parking lot, um, face, you know, by, right in front of the school, that space we have to keep clear because there are people coming in and out to handle business there. So it would be, um, it would be challenging to use that space. Um, but um, it, I think it, whether we did it there or at our location, it would still be the same concern if your concern is around, you know, sanitizing.
Um, good, uh, Ms. Barber?
Yeah, thank you, um, President, Council President, um, Curtis. I have to echo, um, Councilwoman Jones's, um, point that we have a protocol for people that come in the building as far as temperature checks and as far as contact tracing. And if there are, you know, multiple people coming in and out of the building, then I guess I just have some concern about how valid that's gonna be then. Um, if they are having interactions with the testing individuals and then coming into the building, how, how safe is that? I know they have PPE and things like that, but how safe is that for our, um, for our staff? And, um, I was just there, uh, last week when the police had their staff meeting there um, at the beginning of their shift. And perhaps, um, Acting Chief Robinson can discuss that. Um, you know, that room is used for that purpose and it, I think it would be a disservice to our um, employees, quite frankly, if we had people rotating in and out of that space there. I, I, I don't know if there's a different part of the building that could be used that has less use to it. Perhaps at the top, um, of the steps, um, those doors could be open and they could come in. Um, I'm not sure. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Guillaume?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I was going to actually say the, the latter part of what um, City Manager Barber mentioned, which is if there's another, um, part of the building that can be utilized. I just don't think that we should just say no, um, just because the, just in case or just because the nutrition center is not available. I also recall a few weeks ago or even last month, seeing so many people trying to get tested. And to Councilman Hairston's point, um, it shows number one, that there is a need like Ms., like, like all of us have, have, or the most of us have stated in this region. But it's very difficult to have people in this region going all the way to DC Pennsylvania Avenue. So knowing that we were able to provide a service to, to our citizens and the, the nearby communities by actually hosting it is something that I'm not willing to necessarily let go of. So to, to City Manager Barber's point, if we can find another, um, location or brainstorm, um, not necessarily right now, if, if time is of the essence, but just, I, I wanna echo what Councilman Hairston said, which is, um, yes, for sure, we wanna do that. And I also want to, uh, while, while it's not a partnership, that, um, I do wanna mention that Councilman Herring did bring up also another, um, resource for, um, COVID testing and PCR, um, test, and that's at Jericho. Um, but again, this is not a partnership with us, but at the end of the day, the way Jericho does it, are the testers are inside. Um, so they're not out in the cold. So to Councilwoman Fareed's point, it's important that they don't freeze while they're trying to do God's work. So, thank you.
And just, sorry, just to add on to that, I did, after being out there for an hour and freezing myself on Thursday, I did drive around to other testing sites in the, in the county to see how they were doing it. And that is how most of them are doing it, where the testers are having a shelter and then they're coming out to, you know, to test people. So, I mean, I, I suggested the nutritional center, but only because, like, that's where they've been going to use the bathroom. Um, so they've already, that, you know, when they were doing it, um, at the municipal center. But certainly, I mean, the gold room space would be fine, um.
And, and what's the ti- what's the timeline to bring them back? Were you thinking immediately? Was it a certain time in the future?
Next week. So starting on next Monday, I wanted to have time for us to kind of get that all together. Um, the temperature for the rest of the week, well, tomorrow's gonna be really cold, but they, at this point, just don't want to have to tell people, you know, call up all the people who have appointments and say, come to the Pennsylvania Avenue. Because then what's gonna happen is some of those people will not be able to get tested, cause they just can't, you know, make it out there. Um, and, uh, and then the temperature's supposed to be in the high forties. And I can't even believe we're considering that to be warm now, but it's supposed to be in the high forties the remainder of the week. So they, they will continue testing, um, where they are.
Uh, Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not understanding this, cause I go up to that town quite a bit. And I, nutrition center is barely being used. I mean, yeah, you have some employees in there during the day, you know, in and out, they may cut through there to go to the police department. Not a, a lot of times the police department door is closed. Um, I know you have finger, are we even doing fingerprinting anymore? You may have somebody in there fingerprinting, but if you got, only have five people who are just gonna be utilizing it, I don't, I don't see what the issue is here. Um, they can stick to a certainty, they have a table, whatever table or stuff they're using to sanitize after, after they do it. Um, the cer- the, the, the service is, is really needed. I mean, you can tell by the long lines. Um, as, um, um, Councilwoman Guillaume said, you know, they're doing it up at, um, Jericho, but it's three days a week. And I mean, you can do walk-in up there too, and it's inside. But I, I, I'm not seeing what the problem is to tell you the honest truth um, with using a nutrition center, because it is not, it is not being utilized as often as, um, you know, it's made out the same. I mean, I mean, you can go up there any time of the day and there's, there'll be, there'll be nobody down there. You know, I mean, I can see if we, we're having a senior lunch program down there or something, that's different, and they can go up to the gold room. But, I mean, if it's something that's, that's right there, that they can just shoot in and shoot out, you know, get warm, um, use the bathroom and then and they've, and they're practicing to send all the CDC protocols, you know, for safety. So I'm not, I don't know, I don't see what the issue is. I think, I think it's needed. I think we need to go ahead and allow them to use it, use, um, the nutrition center and move on. I mean.
Ms., Ms. Barber, is it possible to move, um, the police staff meetings to the gold room? Uh, and just completely seal that space off and allow, I mean, I don't see why staff wanted to come downstairs to nutrition room. But, uh, completely seal that space off and allow, uh, them to use the, um, kitchen or the gold room, um, to accommodate this?
Um, that might be a better question for Acting Chief Robinson than me, um.
Acting Chief Robinson? I see you, Councilman Ferguson.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, I heard what you said. And we can, we can have our roll calls in the substation and Woodmore. That's not, that's actually not an issue. So, I mean, if that's, if that's the issue, then that's not an issue.
Okay.
Okay. And as it relates to the police officers leaving their food in the nutrition center, um.
Well, like I said, we, I, I actually put a microwave up at the substation today, so they can eat their food up there. And the substation does have a refrigerator, so, you know. So, you know, I think, I, I think we're, we're good to go as it relates to that. But, um, but I also wanted to talk about, you know, security for that, for the, uh, COVID thing. You know, uh, because the issue is that manpower. We already know that we're over our over, overtime budget. We know that. So it's hard for us to, you know, do the security for the event at our building, because we have like two to three officers working per tour. And that's about how many we need to successfully shuffle those people with the COVID testing. So, we need to talk about that and possibly, possibly getting officers overtime to work it, because it's, it's becoming an issue now.
So, I'm sorry, I, I thought I had mentioned it, um, when I was first talking about, um, reducing the number of appointments so that we would not, the police support.
Oh, so we would not need the police?
Right, right.
Oh, that would be, that would be accurate.
So I don't know if anybody on the falls ever attended the testing when they were having it at their, well, there were no, there were no police there. I mean, it was really. So by reducing the number of, um, of appointment slots even available. And, you know, now that we've addressed, you know, addressed this matter of you must have an appointment, because that was the other thing, right? The lines were getting very long because people didn't have appointments and were kind of showing up and then getting mad when they, you know, couldn't get tested. But by kind of, um, there's a cou- a number of factors, one, right? Like it's not, um, there's still very much a need for testing, but it wasn't like it was when the schools shut down and there were thousands of people clamoring to be tested. There's still a lot of demand, um, but not those sorts of numbers. And especially since there are now other places opening up, um, that, you know, people are having opportunities. So we can, um, reduce the number of people even testing so that you don't have the traffic issues and you don't have the, the safety concerns. So.
I'm very pleased with that. I'm very pleased with that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Ferguson? Cannot hear you.
You can't hear?
Uh, yeah, now we can.
Can you hear me? I was gonna say, um, the first time the cell, we could use, I'll close the door, the the dress is, and use our papers, uh, if no one is in there, but.
No, I'll just repeat what you said, cause, yeah, it's still cutting out. Uh, Ms. Ferguson was saying that just closing the doors in the nutritional center and using the council chambers, but it's a moot point because Acting Chief Jackson said that they can do all their stuff at the subcenter. So, all right, uh, if, if we could briefly, uh, Councilwoman Guillaume?
So, Council President, that's what I was going to say. I was gonna say we still need to get to citizens' comments. So I didn't know if we could take, if, if we should be taking consensus right now or not, but I just wanted to just say that. That's it.
Yeah, okay. Uh, and I don't know if I saw your hand or not, Ms. Jones, so. Uh, but, but briefly, if you did have anything?
Yeah, I did. Um, I'm still concerned about, uh, the, the administrative staff of the police department, Ms. Allen and Ms. Jones. They're still gonna be in, in that space and they also use that small kitchenette for their, to put their lunches away or to do, do different things. So. Um, so, and they also, the other thing was too, uh, that, one Wednesday I was up there, uh, on Leslie Street and they had moved the traffic around there, but I think Councilwoman Fareed has also said that they're gonna cut the number of appointments. So hopefully that'll cut down on that traffic on Leslie. Uh, the trash truck couldn't get through. One of the citizens catty-cornered his truck, so nobody could stop in front of his house. I mean, it just created a whole lot of traffic issues also, but if they're cutting back the number of appointments, maybe that'll, uh, address that issue.
So how about this, we, you know, one, I think we can move the microwave, um, and if it's a mini fridge, move the mini fridge to put it in maybe these quarters, but we can iron out details this week. Uh, um, but I think the, the core of what we wanna do, we're intact. Um, so if, just for consensus uh, with, that we'll be ironing out details, uh, for the week. Um, and if we reach something, some logistical impasse that we can't overcome, then we can, you know, call a meeting, but, uh, uh, briefly for a consensus to bring it back to. But, uh, uh, briefly, for a consensus to bring it back to, um.
I'm sorry, Council President.
Okay, I, I was about to come to you, Mayor, one second, to bring it back to, um, the, uh, Mr. Centerville Monday, Mayor Cross, briefly, please.
Yeah, so I, I'm gonna echo Council, uh, President with City Manager Barber as well as, um, um, Councilwoman Jones on this one. Uh, we just finished having a discussion about the gold room and about the facilities and minimizing the foot traffic there due to the rise of COVID nineteen. We had a discussion about moving this, uh, off of the campus and over to, uh, First Baptist Church of Glen Arden because of the disruption to the traffic patterns that are around the, um, Leslie as well as McLean, but not only that, but also the impact that it has on code enforcement, because they have to block the parking lot, um, for the administration to have parking. And not only that, but for three weeks now, we just talked about the police officers running out of overtime, and we've been utilizing two to three police officers to cover down on this security detail. Uh, I think it's just, in the essence of transparency, what's happening here is still along the lines of what you've just asked the administration to not do. Um, I know that we have been doing a great service, but when is it time for us to acknowledge that this has gotten way bigger than we can control at this point for the amount of impact that it's having? I am so pleased, but we do have Jericho, uh, we do have, um, Landover, areas where our citizens can get this service, and we also still have the CBS Omar Luther King, where you can also get rapid testing, uh, we were able to get in there and get an appointment really quick. So, it's not like you don't have options. Uh, what I do not want is for the administration, uh, to be, um, at a point where we were before, where we couldn't park, and if people were coming to pay their bills, then they couldn't get in, and we had to ask for a traffic mitigation strategy. Uh, reducing the number of, of, uh, appointments, what does that literally mean when you're taking a thousand appointments a day? So, I mean, if you're not reducing it to like twenty or thirty a day, then you're still gonna have a heavy weight on the police officers, as well as code enforcement, who has to protect the administration parking lot. Thank you.
Mayor Cross, uh. Well, I'm sorry, Ms. Barber, is it doable to close off that section? Because we are talking about five people, we're not talking about having an event where people are coming in and through the municipal center. But, Ms. Barber, is it possible to, to, uh, section off the nutrition center? Uh, and, and use, uh, that area for the, the staffers? Uh, and then we can monitor how things go, and if we need to make adjustments, we can make adjustments. Um, uh, welcome your thoughts on, on that piece.
Um, I think we can, we can see in the next day, um, if we can do something, and if it's not doable, then we can get back in touch with Councilwoman Fareed, um. Again, I just, I, my concern is for the safety and health of the employees, um, in the, you know, is my first concern. And then, um, definitely putting out the need for the community, but we'll see what we can do, and if there is a logistical issue, then we'll get back in touch with, um, Councilwoman Fareed as soon as possible.
Okay, uh, so, we could do a consensus, since we hear of moving it back with the, you know, stipulations, so if we can make it work, and if we can't make it work, all right, uh, Councilwoman Harry?
Yeah, let, let me say before, before I give my consensus is that this is really, really really, really an honest, I honestly believe, I believe, um, because if, if, if you want, I mean, we paid four thousand dollars for a divider down in the council chambers. Pull that divider across, use the one half where the council sits. They can go in and out the door there to go to the bathroom, and they completely sectioned off from the other half, and you're done. Um, my thing is, these people are, I'm sure they've, they're testing themselves, they, they, they're not, they're testing negative for COVID, they're not walking up in there with COVID, you know, so I'm not understanding what the issue is. I mean, it's a service to the, to the community, I mean, I, I mean, so many citizens are appreciative of their service being in Glen Arden. They really are, so like I said, I don't see an issue, we've got a divider down there in, in, in the nutrition center, you pull it across. One half is the nutrition center, the other half is council chambers, you have a door that they can keep the door closed if you want to. When a guy go to the bathroom, go to the bathroom, close it back, if they wanna wipe down everything before they leave the bathroom, do that, you know, and stay in that section, so I, I say yes, because it's a service that, that's needed, so I don't see the issue. Um, so, yes, to bring it back.
Councilwoman Jones.
So, you're saying put them in the council chambers or on the nutrition center side?
The council chambers, leave the nutrition center open and put them in the council chambers, because no one's using that over there anyway, we're not down there.
A pass.
Councilman Ferguson, I'm sorry, yeah, well, go ahead, Councilman Ferguson. All right, we can't hear you.
Can I hear?
It's very faint.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you a little bit, yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, I said, that's basically what I said, um, close the door and use the table, but not there. And as far as me saying, um, the, can you hear me?
No, but keep on, I'm just waiting for your, your, I, I, I'll repeat what you said, I can, these are.
Administration, I'm talking about having hundred and forty people, and a couple of person, five people. So, I would say, um, yes.
All right, so Ms. Ferguson's vote was yes, because in the events that she was referring to with Mayor Cross was concerned about the events that Ms. Ferguson was talking about was with thirty to forty people. In this case, it's only five people that'll be entering to the building, so her vote was yes, uh, Councilwoman Fareed.
I'm okay, yeah.
Councilwoman Gilliam.
My answer is yes, and I also want to add that whole utilizing the municipal center slash gold room to hold super spreader event is very different than utilizing the gold room with five people who are trying to stop or aid us in a pandemic where our region ranks what amongst the highest. So, yes, again.
Thank you, Councilman Hairston.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Curtis is, yes, uh, Councilwoman Jones.
Um, we also remember that, uh, Gerald Family Medical Center is right there at seventy-nine hundred, in seventy-nine hundred block of Johnson Avenue, and they also do testing, so it's not like we don't have anything in the area, but, um, once the city manager comes back with her, uh, assessment of how we're gonna really do this, I'll just abstain.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we have a consensus to move it back, uh, Councilwoman, um, City Manager Barber, you'll get back to Councilwoman Fareed or the council, uh, with details of how we can make it work, utilizing the council chambers, uh, as sectioning off the nutrition center so that, you know, your staff can still use it, and they will also monitor the traffic patterns, uh, if we, you know, uh, next week when it starts, um. Council, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Ms. Barber.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, well, with that, that is the last topic of the discussion, I apologize for running over, but I think that was, you know, uh, the things we talked about was much needed, uh, and can benefit the city. So, uh, now we're opened up to citizens' comments, if there are any, uh, please virtually raise your hand, uh, if you have, uh, uh, a comment, um, and if you do not know how to virtually raise your hand, um, then, uh, you can just, um, put in the chat, Ms. Ferguson, I'm the first, uh, Councilwoman Jones, if you can enable a chat, and if you have a comment, just say I have a comment, and then I'll call your name. And the chat is now open, but, uh, I'll start with, uh, Ms. Joyce, because I saw that she put her, took herself off mute, so I'm assuming that you have a question.
I do, and thank you and good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I have a problem, uh, this COVID testing, um. Uh, Councilmember Fareed, did you take in consideration, uh, all the citizens, the seniors in this city who don't have access to social media, uh, to make appointments? I was in the line for three, for I don't know how long, I get up there and they tell me I have to have an appointment. Why? I want to know why.
So, um, thank you, Ms. Joyce, for that comment. Um, we had to make it appointment only because of, of what we discussed. There were so many people, um, attempting to come and get tested who did not have appointments, and when you don't have an appointment, that means they don't have your information already available. So, the idea with the testing in order to kind of make it go quickly is that, um, when you arrive and you say, my name is Erica Frey, they look you up on the list, they pull your label, your label already has all the information, and you basically just verify that, but it's more than just kind of the label, it's the insurance information that needs to be collected. It's your, you know, identification, all of that information, it needs to be captured from a registration perceptive. So, that is the reason why we had to do it, because if you're not registered and you're in a line and, um, you're taking the time to do that, that could be, you know, a ten-minute process, and then there are people behind you and the lines are backing up. So, that is the reason why we had to, um, be very, in the requirement of having appointments. Um, and one other thing that I, I didn't mention in bringing us back, um, is the ability to take walk-in appointments or walk up, yeah, walk-ups. So, right now, you know, people would be driving through, but we want to be able to accommodate those people who don't have cars. Um, and so, in all cases, everyone needs to have an appointment, because even if you imagine people walking up, if they don't have anything filled out and those five testers have to then register those people, again, it's a holdup. Um, in terms of that information being communicated on social media, so you don't need social media in order to register for the, um, the testing. Uh, there is a number that, um, can be called if you need to register, but even if you call that number, they will walk you through registering, um, online. Maybe it'll be helpful if we can kind of put up a, a video online for how people can register. Um, in terms, if you're asking me why there's no ability to register without uh, doing it on a computer or some sort of device, I don't, I don't have an answer that I think would satisfy you, other than that's how you have to register. Even if you took a test at CBS, you would need to register online in order to, um, get that appointment.
And why couldn't, why couldn't they have asked us when you got up there for your, your vaccination card? Or some, some type of, uh, indication? I mean, I don't understand that, you get up there and you don't know that, and you've got citizens, seniors in this city that don't have access to all that, so what do you seniors do in this city? I am concerned, because I'm one of them, and I get up there, I've been vaccinated, I was vaccinated, uh, on the sixteenth of December. But he could have asked me for my vaccination card, some type of ID, but to say you gotta go online to, you had to have an appointment. But there are other centers in the city that I've heard, like, uh, over near Doctor's Hospital, you don't have to go through this. And I didn't think I would have to go through it here in my city, and that concerned me.
And I'm sorry, I understand your frustration, and, you know, again, the need for testing is, is obviously here. What we're trying to do is accommodate as much as possible. Um, I will speak on behalf of Dr. Cohen, because Dr. Cohen was taking everybody, whether you were registered or not registered, she wanted to make sure that everyone got tested. But as you heard, there are concerns from some people around the traffic and around, you know, just the kind of our ability to manage that, and that was the, um, compromise, so to speak, was that we had to enforce the no appointments and, and, you know, kind of going off to, to make an appointment so you can come back. And that was, again, just to manage the traffic. I would urge, um, anyone who is in need of assistance to please reach out. Um, you can reach out to me, you can call City Call, I have helped people to be able to register for, um, you know, an appointment, even, you know, facilitating the contact with Dr. Cohen to, to go ahead and do that. The intention is not to make this a difficult process for you, but as you're hearing in this call, it's not just a matter of heart and having a desire to do this, but also, you know, kind of man, balancing the logistics of, of what that entails. So, again, I'm sorry, Ms. Joyce, that that was your experience, um, and hopefully.
It's not only that experience, but it was other seniors' experience, and we're citizens here, and we're seniors. So, you didn't do, as far as I'm concerned, it was forty plan. I hate to say it, that's, that's the way I feel about it, so we'll go on from there, okay? Uh, I also want to talk about December sixteen, the event in the gold room. And they've been in the gold room, uh, uh, on December sixteen, the Senator Benson's event. That gold room, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that, okay, I spent three hours in that gold room with Natae, the gold room, uh, worker. The gold room, we, what we did was, we separated all the tables and chairs by six feet, according to the gold room, the COVID guidelines, there's only eleven tables in there. So, there was no one in that gold room on top of each other. All, everything was by the COVID, the COVID guideline. And, uh, I apologize to, to, uh, Council, Council, uh, Member, uh, Ms. Bellon. Uh, you know, she said she got COVID, uh, whether she got COVID there, I don't know. But the thing is, I want everybody to know, there was only eleven tables, separated six feet apart, only six, six, I'm sorry, six people were at a table, eleven tables. All the chairs around the gold room, I said again, were six feet apart. So, that's, but I wanted to also know, that gold room was, was by the, the COVID guidelines.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Joyce.
Yeah, and the other thing I'm.
Ms. Joyce, Ms. Joyce, unfortunately, there's a, a time limit, so, but feel free, uh, to email us. Uh, you can send your questions or concerns to us, we're also having another, um, uh, meeting next week where we won't talk at all, it's just purely for all the citizens to, to speak and ask questions. But in the sake of time, uh, we're going to move on. Uh, but like I said, feel free to email us, uh, or you come back, uh, next week, and it's all about, uh. Thank you, uh, Ms. Victoria Herson.
Good evening, um, thank you for taking my, um, questions, so I only have two quick questions, and, um, one is around the sale of the Woodmore Town Center. I actually sent, uh, Mayor Cross an email while we were on this call, just in case, um, my question wasn't addressed, but it sounds like you all are still trying to get information about that, so it may be premature, but, you know, one of the biggest questions I have is the implication of the sale and what the impact is to the, the citizens, if there's any. And as well as if this is at all, um, connected to any of the rezoning discussions that are, um, that were taking place last fall. Um, so, I heard about the sales through WTOP. Um, I may have missed the meeting where it was discussed, but I actually had a friend of mine. I actually had a, a friend of mine send it to me, which was a little bit embarrassing that I didn't know, but you know, I don't know everything, so I didn't take it personal. But was it advertised anywhere or were citizens informed or were you all informed?
Um, well, unfortunately, um, I found out the way you found out. So I don't, you know, I, I don't know if it's, you know, I, we could do this as far as the research. Uh, what's protocol and when somebody's trying to buy something in a city? I don't, not quite sure if they have to tell uh, us. But I think Mr. uh, Herring, uh, Mr. Hairstonum uh, is on target with us needing to get, now that we know, uh, you know, gathering all the details and meeting with them to get ahead of what they want to do with the space. And us uh, being the, the checkpoint and check and balances relates to the city of Glen Arden. So yeah, to answer your question, unfortunately, uh, unless any, any other council member had inside knowledge of it, which I don't think they did, I found out via Facebook.
Yeah. Um, well, I was just, just curious, um, you know, it was such a, a, a big sale, multimillion dollars. I was, um, I didn't know how much you all knew about it or not. Um, so I just thought I would, would ask what those implications were. The, the other thing I wanted to just raise quickly was um, about the testing. I am appreciative that Glen Arden is um, doing this service for its residents. And it seems as, you know, anyone else that wants to come as well can, can take advantage of this opportunity. And um, yes, it was an inconvenience in the neighborhood. I live on Johnson Avenue, so it was an inconvenience trying to get out. But no, it was all worth a good cause. I did go to First Baptist Church of Glen Arden on Saturday. Uh, got up early to go up there to find out that there was no testing. It was all set up and the, the, the testing had moved to Pennsylvania Avenue, which is hugely inconvenient. So I forego the, the testing um, for myself, but I'm fine, so there's neither here nor there. But that wasn't communicated. So, while I was up there riding around and there was no one there, actually, there was one person from the church that actually ended up telling me that the testing had moved and they weren't informed. Um, so that was a little bit of problematic inconvenience, um, because there were other cars coming as I was leaving. And so, um, the communication around that um, just was a little bit bumpy, but you know, I understand things happen. Um, one thing I did want to ask though is since the city did get money for PPE, is it possible that the residents can be given um, tests that we can take at home? Because these tests that are given out at the library are gone in like twenty minutes. And so, you know, if we have the money, could we just, you know, it would help the citizens such as Ms. Joyce Butler, who, who was in line three or four hours and couldn't get tested. But, you know, maybe every citizen in Glen Arden can get uh, a share of tests that they could just have at their home so that they wouldn't have to be in line three or four hours. And, and, and the senior citizens don't have to try to figure out how they have to navigate through a website. I get what she's saying. I know several seniors that I help personally with anything technology-related. So I definitely sympathize with her. And I, I, and also, is there a way, if we do continue to do this um, drive-by testing, if we could just earmark some time or set aside time just for seniors so that they can be helped if they have to drive up and we have to have someone actually standing and register them for them? Like, you know, can they be just allocated a day, this is for seniors? And, and knowing that it's just going to take longer and maybe the blocks of time are thirty minutes versus fifteen minutes? Just a thought. But um, I appreciate all that you're doing and I, I definitely think that um, the testing is needed. I think there's a lot of things that can be done to make it better. I'm glad to hear that the, the workers aren't going to be freezing anymore. Um, but I do think there's some areas where we can support our citizens, our seniors in particularly, that aren't polit- um, uh, technology savvy. And to just say we can't do it unless they register, I think, is not serving them well. We can figure it out, we're all smart, we can figure this out to help them. But thank you for taking my call, my question.
Thank you, I'm glad I picked one that, you have some great ideas that uh, you know, we'll take to the drawing board and um, I do believe uh, you know, opera funds can cover testing, uh, test kits uh, that we can send out to our um, citizens. We'll have to vet that, but that was a great uh, idea. Uh, and as well as the um, the specialized time. And I'm pretty sure Ms., Ms. Councilman Free will talk to um, Councilwoman Brown, let you just chime in here.
Yes, I, um, and I, I think those are great comments. And I think uh, one thing is that what I really appreciate is how we're working together around this. COVID itself was not something that was planned. Certainly Omicron was not something that was planned. The, the surge in um, demand was not something that was planned. Um, so while it would have been uh, great to kind of have it all lined up in um, you know, perfect before we did it, it kind of came at a time when we were in the midst of stuff and trying to figure out as we went along. So I think what we're doing now in kind of having an opportunity to let demand slow down some and kind of reassess and, and put forward a plan um, is going to be helpful. One thing I do want to reiterate to the citizens though is that this is a partnership. So I, I don't want people to think that Glen Arden is doing the testing. Like, it's not Glen Arden employees that are facilitating the testing. We are working with a medical provider who is doing that. So, the registration um, requirement is not something that is set by the city. If we're going to assist people with registration, ultimately, that person still needs to be registered in that specific website. So, again, the resources um, you know, will be made available. I know I have been available to people calling me and asking me and I'm facilitating that. We will do what we can to um, you know, assist people, but appreciate all the feedback. Um, both good and bad, and we'll just continue to incorporate that to make this go more smoothly for people.
Thank you, Councilwoman Free, Ms. Virginia.
Hello, um, two, two questions, no, three questions. First, let me uh, clarify something for Ms. Person. Ms. Person, Woodmore Town Center has been up for sale for the past three years prior to Mr. Petrie Ross. He put the, uh, Woodmore Town Center up for, uh, for sale. That's been over three years ago and they just found a buyer. Uh, as far as registering on the internet to get the testing, I called the number, I was right, uh, doing my registration. The system told me that I had a password problem. I called the number to talk to the young lady about having my password reset. Her attitude was very negative and she was not cooperative. She had the nerve to tell me to use a new email and set up a new account. And I told her I wasn't going to do that. All she needed to do is give me a name of somebody that I can call and talk to them so I can have my password reset, which she did not do, so that's an issue. My other issue is with the fence on um, Bryce Road. Glen Arden has a policy, there's, there is no fence to be in your front yard. There's a fence at this man's house on Bryce Road in his front yard. So code enforcement or the police department need to go over there and talk to those people and find out where did they get permission to have a fence put up in their front yard? I think last week when y'all was having at the work section, somebody asked the question, "How did the telework work for the city of Glen Arden when it was implemented?" Well, it did not work very well. And the reason why I'm saying this because when the applicant, when the, when it was implemented, the clerk had the opportunity to work at home. When this president's change uh, from over, Robin Jones and Angela Ferguson refused to let the clerk work from home, even when the building was closed, they made her come into the office to do Zooming. So the telework did not work properly. Uh, as far as the marquee, the marquee is a mess. Citizens still cannot read the marquee, they're still calling and complaining about the marquee. And I told them that I have talked to Mrs. Cross about the marquee and she told me to tell the citizens to put their glasses on while they're setting at the light and try to read the marquee. Now that is something that a mayor should never have to say. She should go out there and park her car on Black, on Glen Arden Parkway at seven oh four and set at their light and try to read it. It is a mess, you cannot read it at all. Uh, the second thing y'all talked about was sidewalks. Um, I wanted to know why hadn't y'all not um, partnership with Sustainable Community about getting the, getting the sidewalks uh, fixed? They are one of the organizations that we um, have uh, contracted with. And when we was getting Sustainable Community, uh, community into this, into the city, they did say they will work with us in getting sidewalks. So I don't know why y'all not talking with those people. And I also wanted to know, how many of these, these sidewalks are in a Woodmore Town Center? Because Woodmore Town Center's streets has not been um, transferred into the city. So the syndicate do that, do their streets anyway, do their sidewalks anyway. So can somebody give me an answer, how many of these uh, sidewalks are located in Woodmore?
Well, uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Virginia, for your comments. Um, I, I don't know have the numbers for how many sidewalks are where. Uh, I do know that Woodmore has a lot of sidewalks, so I, I doubt that it was targeted towards Woodmore at all. Uh, it was more so for other areas in the city, which Mr. Herring said will be uphill battle because of, you know, we have to talk to citizens. So um, with that, I'll just leave that there. Um, I, I don't, uh, the other, you know, comments were just statements, so I'll leave that be. Um, and uh, thank you for your comment.
I still got a minute, I still have a minute, I still have a minute. My other, my other concern is um, how many uh, citizens from Glen Arden participated in the Pony Express?
Um, Mayor Cross, do you have those numbers?
So we had about hundred and six people participate. Uh, and the preponderance of them actually were citizens of Glen Arden. Uh, mostly was the largest uh, presentation of our um, uh, Spanish-speaking Hispanic community in attendance out of Ward One. Uh, to answer your question about sidewalks, the sidewalks of, that will be in the thirty that's been uh, attended to is Glen Arden Parkway, McLean Street, Reed Street, Fifth and Third, Wesley Street, um, and Johnson Court. Those are the sidewalks that'll be addressed. The marquee, um, I do want to.
Hold on, Ms., 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 uh, Mrs. Ross, because I think you said in your, in your, in your presentation, that they are str- they are sidewalks in Woodmore that need to be attended to.
So that's different from the sidewalks that we're attending to. Um, if you'll see the mayor's report, it should be attached to the meeting reports. Uh, you'll find that on uh, page five, where we have an actual chart, which tells you all the streets that will be addressed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Virginia?
You must remember that uh, those are HMO streets over there in Woodmore Town Center.
Thank you, Ms. Virginia. Um, I just reminded that we are working uh, that Woodmore at Glen Arden is a part of uh, Glen Arden, all of the citizens there are citizens of Glen Arden. Uh, so it's just, we're working to get the um, things transferred as they're streets and things like that. Councilwoman Ferguson? Sorry, I didn't hear you.
I need a new computer. You hear that? I just want to say that um, the statement that I made concerning Ms. Taylor not allowing her to telework, I was not her supervisor, I, I, I never brought her in or, 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 or told her not to come in. That is not a true statement, I had nothing to do with her teleworking, one way or the other.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Uh, Mr. Jesse, Jesse Huff Jr.?
Good evening, everyone, Happy New Years. Uh, I just want to uh, about the COVID testing that's been going on, uh, is it a way that we can start getting like uh, postcard out to the seniors a week ahead to letting them know like what days it's going to be tested? Because I had a lot of seniors who said that, uh, who told me, like, they don't use the internet and then they hearing about it word of mouth. And that they going up there and they've been told that they need appointments. So I was sort of trying to see if we can like get a postcard sent out, just send it out to the seniors, letting them know what days testing going to be and where it's going to be at and everything that they need to do. And then uh, uh, a comment, uh, Gerald Family Care, they does not provide COVID testing anymore. Uh, and then another comment, Mr. Henry made a comment about the bamboo haze pop. So Public Works been cutting that bamboo every two years. This is, uh, this past year, the bamboo has been growing real well. I've been, I sent many of emails, pictures to you, Mr. Curtis, the mayor and everyone. So you could share that with him. And I was just, uh, the branches from the, uh, that bamboo was starting to fall. And we was getting a lot of, uh, cus- a lot of complaints about it just falling on people's cars. So that's why I made it known to, you know, the city. So that way if it, that way we could fix the problem before it got worse. Because I don't want it to fall on nobody. And then always a lawsuit against the city where we could have just fixed, we could have had, we fixed the problem. We fixed the problem before the problem came. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Huff Jr. Now, are there any other?
Has the mayor, mayor, mayor respond to that right quick?
Yes, sir, Councilman Harry.
Let me say, that bamboo has been there for fifty, about fifteen years, and it was just a matter of it being maintained. That bamboo falling over is not going to damage anybody's car. Um, the problem was not fixed, the problem was actually exacerbated because now there's nothing to hold the water back on that hill. That's the original intent of the bamboo being put up there. So that's why I'm saying that that was put up there with grant money. Council members spend a lot of time and energy to get grant money to beautify the city and for it just to be cut down, because somebody thinks it should be. Without somebody even finding out what, why it was there, what, what the purpose of it and everything is irresponsible. You know, so now we got to put something there to hold that hill back because it's nothing but dirt. And you're going to see as it rain and as it snow and everything else, that dirt is going to run right off that hill down into the parking lot. Then we have complaints about dirt in the parking lot. So, the bamboo was there for a certain rea- for a certain, the only thing that was up in that bamboo was a bunch of cats that people be feeding. Um, as for it falling down, that was just a matter of trimming it back far enough and, 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 and that's the responsibility of Public Works. So, um, it was there for a reason. It could, it could, it could be maintained, maintained correctly is, is, is a nice divider between the property line of the house next door and the city's property. And it also held the dirt back on, on the hill. That's what the, that's what the um, purpose of that bamboo being planted there was for, so just wanted to get that clear. And it was also a state grant that paid for that.
So. Can I uh, make a comment?
Uh.
This real quick, I just want to say, I've been working there for seven years and I once, and the la- every time they cut it, not once have I seen the mud run down from that hill. So I maybe, you maybe saying something that I don't see, I just wanted to say that.
The bamboo was never cut to the, to the ground uh, in that spot.
They, they did it three times before. They do it, they've done, they done did it three times since I haven't been there.
It's not been cut down to the ground, I know that for a fact. But there's neither here nor there, there needs to be back, it needs to be planted back.
Uh, okay. Thank you, uh, Mr. Huff Jr., thank you, Councilman Harry. Uh, okay. Thank you, uh, Mr. Huff Jr. Thank you, Councilman Harry. Uh, are there any other questions or comments about citizens?
I want to say something.
And to, um, Ms. I'm sorry, did someone say something?
Yes, Joyce, Ms., Ms. Butler.
Yes, Ms. Butler. I, uh, you're, you're, if you're saying anything at all.
Can you hear me?
Yes, briefly, please.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to get used to this. This is not, okay.
I understand.
St. Michael's Drive. I, I come down St. Michael's Drive quite a bit. I brought it to the attention of, uh, the chief. Uh, I think it was week before last. I was driving down St. Michael's Drive. And I tell you, no, it's a St. Michael's place, whatever. There is a lot of speeding going through there. I was doing twenty, twenty-five. One, one young guy pulled all the way around me to, to go past me to get to the circle, half circle. So it, and I called that attention, that attention to, to the chief. Monitor that, that strip right, you know, that right there, because it is a lot of speeding going, it goes through there. I just want to bring it to your attention, and I did talk to the chief about it.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm glad you brought that to the chief. It was the, the right thing to do and, you know, you know, efforts by the council. Uh, we're doing everything we can to, to mitigate these, uh, um, traffic concerns. Uh, big time, but you know, the work has started, you know, and we'll hopefully have something in place to eventually stop that from happening. Um, just a couple more things. Uh, I see one more question in the chat, uh, about postal services. The, these are ideas that we have. Uh, they're in the, you know, the beginning stages of it. Uh, so we'll, we'll iron out things and see if the, you know, the sidewalk work will, um, have an effect on, you know, people, uh, the postal services walking versus driving. Um, again, they still have to be ironed out. It'll still have to be introduced as resolutions. Public comments still have to be had where you get to, you know, um, ask more detailed questions and before it's even voted on. So uh, these are all ideas that we're just starting to work on. And just asking for everybody's patience. We understand that, you know, when we're doing certain things that, uh, as Ms. Farida said, that, you know, nobody was really expecting, uh, Omicron, Omicron, uh, to, uh, just blow up as it did. Uh, and when we're reacting to something that, um, is so huge and affecting our community, um, then it doesn't necessarily give us the, the best time to iron out all the wrinkles, uh, when the immediate need is to get testing for people. Uh, again, this, this virus has killed over a million people. Um, uh, and so, um, we will do our best, uh, to mitigate, you know, the, the inconvenience, uh, for, for our citizens as ways to affect measures and uh, testing, especially with seniors. Like, we hear your concerns, you know, uh, and we, I'm sure Ms. Farida is going to, um, spend a lot of time brainstorming. The council's going to spend a lot of time brainstorming as well as the city manager, uh, uh, and the mayor, uh, to see how we can get things out to our seniors, because it's something that we want for, for everybody. Um, and just continue to ask for your, your patience and your prayers for, for those who are, uh, sick and, and need assistance. So uh, thank you very much. Um, the only hands I see up are the hands of the four. Uh, and with that, uh, Mayor Cross, is that your hand said?
Thank you. I do address, uh, I believe Councilwoman Smallwood's question about that marquee. Uh, that is, I did not say tell the citizens to put their glasses on. I want to clarify that. The marquee, ADA compliance for the colorblind. And in fact, every twelve men and one in every two hundred women, which is equivalents to about every twenty-five persons, you're going to meet someone who couldn't see the color scheme that was there before. Uh, we have modified that marquee since October, at least, you know, for, for at least twenty times, trying to manage it against, you know, the, the various requests that have come in. So I just wanted to clarify that. We are addressing that marquee in accordance with the ADA compliance for those in our community that are colorblind. And, um, we've gotten some excellent report on how that marquee is playing out in the community. Uh, you know, I do, I do empathize with those, uh, comments that you've said. But I just wanted to make sure that it's clear for the record, what we did for that marquee is ADA compliant. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Uh, with that being said, um, Councilman Herring, are you good to go?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, does the city manager have something that she wanted to say? But I'm good. Thank you, Council President. Her hand is still up. That's why I ask.
Okay, I'll check with her. Councilwoman Gill.
I'm good. Thank you.
Council Ferguson?
I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I just been up the whole time. I didn't think she had anything to say, but, uh, Council, uh, Ms. Barber?
No, thank you. I'm, I'm fine. Thank you. And I apologize about that.
Nice. Fine. And Mayor Cross, I take it that you were, got your phone to word in. Uh, all right, well, with that, thank you guys for coming out again. Apologies for going over, but I think there's a, a substantive conversation about things that are going on in the city. Uh, and we'll see you next week where you have more time to, uh, it won't be the mayor or the council speaking. It'll just be opportunity to, for the citizens to, to bring stuff and voice your concerns. Um, uh, so thank you and have a good night. Be safe.
Thank you.